Commission is now called to order at 6:00 PM. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
City Clerk, roll call please.
Thank you Commissioner Bonzell, Commissioner Frazier, Commissioner Lorenzer.
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
Mayor Protem Hill.
Here.
Mayor Smith. Here. Commissioners, do we have a motion to excuse Commissioner Bonzell? Commissioner Stonehouse.
I will motion to excuse Commissioner Bonzell.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Lorenzer?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Is there a reason, Your Honor?
A reason?
We have the reason for it.
Commissioner Stonehouse, would you like to amend your motion to?
No, he doesn't have, he just has to indicate the reason.
Okay, the reason.
He's out of town on business.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bonzell is out of town on business, not able to attend this meeting.
Thank you Commissioner Stonehouse. Any discussion on that item? Hearing none, all in favor please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. I did want to note that Commissioner Frazier is on his way and will be joining us at some point during this meeting.
Five zero.
Five zero, thank you, sorry about that. Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us, do we have a motion? Commissioner Lorenzer?
Motion to approve the agenda as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you Mayor Protem Hill, any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor please say yes. Motion passes five zero. Announcements, we have several vacancies on city boards and committees, volunteers to serve in this capacity, volunteering to serve in this capacity is a great way to give back, learn new things and meet new people, please consider joining if that's something you're interested in or share it with someone who might be. I will just read a list of the boards and committees that currently have vacancies. We've got the Board of Zoning Appeals, Board of Review, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Harbor Advisory Committee, Investment Advisory Board, Local Development Finance Authority, Local Officers Compensation Commission, Market Area Wastewater Treatment Advisory Board, Market County Transit Authority, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Planning Commission, Police Fire Pension Board, and Public Art Commission. Next up, I have to welcome, I get to welcome, three new members. Looking in the audience, I think only one of them has joined us this evening, I know it's kind of snowy out there, so if Mark Schneider could please join me at the podium. Come on over here, and we've got City Clerk joining us to do your oath. Wanted to present a pin to you.
Thank you.
And say thank you for your willingness to join the Board of Review, it's an excellent committee that really helps us on the City Commission to do our job.
Absolutely.
City Clerk, if you could do the oath please.
Yeah.
Sure thing. What's that? Mark. Yep, no worries. All righty. I, Mark Schneider, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Marquette, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the Board of Review of the City of Marquette according to the best of my ability.
Good, welcome, I just need two signatures.
All righty. Okay. All righty.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioners, we have one appointment listed in front of us, do we have a motion?
I move that we appoint Christina Perhak to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Schlegel.
Second motion.
Mayor Protem Hill, any comments?
Glad she's stepping up and she has an architecture background, it could be quite applicable to the committee.
And Commissioner Schlegel, any comments?
None, thank you.
Any other discussion on this topic? Commissioner Lorenzer?
Yeah, I just want to point out that in the spirit of transparency, I think it's fundamental that the public know a few things about this appointment. I do want to acknowledge the experience and skills that Ms. Perhak, Perhak, that she brings to the table are pretty profound, she appears to be an incredible architect, she has experience with the National Park Service, I overlooked her application and work history, and I definitely commend her for stepping up to the task of servitude. Her first choice was Planning Commission, and I think it's relevant because we're taking a prudent pass on that request. Ms. Perhak is a project coordinator for an architecture firm that works directly and closely with Veridia Group, who as you know is one of Marquette's biggest developers, and having someone so closely involved in development on the Planning Commission for me is a little problematic. The zoning board of appeals works a little bit differently, it's significantly less powerful. Any appeal from Veridia Group, she would have to recuse herself, and I've asked a lot of questions this week probably to the annoyance of the mayor, but about any hypothetical scenarios that would, where her allegiances would conflict, and I got adequate answers. So, we have solid ethics and legal laws that prevent her from moving an agenda forward, that prohibits her from making decisions that would benefit her firm's relationships with her client or her financially, and I expect and trust those to be respected and enforced. I had deep reservations about the Planning Commission request, as planning and zoning can exclusively be about development, it needs to be equally about land protection and the environment, but considering the legal restrictions on the ZBA, I'm confident moving her appointment forward. I just wanted to acknowledge that possible conflict, I think her experience outweighs any problems to which she would be easily accountable. Approval of recommendations from the ZBA come through us anyway, so as so long as we diligently follow ethics and legal laws, I welcome her aboard.
Comment?
Go ahead Commissioner Schlegel.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. I appreciate what you're saying Andrew, I think it's also very important that I don't want anybody to be discouraged from putting their name in for any kind of a position. They are vetted through all the commissioners and the mayor eventually makes the recommendation. Even if this very highly qualified applicant would have been allowed to be on the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission is dictated by the laws set forth by the state. So there is no way that this person could have had, they would have had to recuse themselves if it would have been a conflict of interest, but more importantly, they can't let their heart get involved in their decision-making on the Planning Commission, and that's very important to understand. With that being said, I don't quite see it as the same as Commissioner Lorenzer, but by no means do I want anybody out there to think that, that, that person could have done something that is not in line with what the state dictates as far as being on a Planning Commission, and I think that's very, very important to understand.
Thank you. Back to the original motion, all in favor please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes five zero. Brings us to public comment. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person, please clearly state your name and physical address when making public comments. Also please note the commissioners cannot immediately respond to public comments, our chance to do so is at the end of the meeting during Commissioner comments. Go ahead.
James Gallant, 38 Yama Road, Scandinia, Marquette Company Suicide Prevention Coalition. And you know, I've been here many times for you folks, that's why I'm not going to have a prepared statement for you. I'd like to just to consider, if you're, I noticed you haven't put on the agenda yet that the rules that you're supposed to do every year, that you put the amending the rules, but you haven't done that yet, I'd ask you to please do, consider the part about having a public hearing for that and get the community involved. I've had many people contact me and come up to me and ask me about the Roberts rules, what's this mean, why is this, and they don't understand. I don't think that a lot of you even understand what the actual rules are here, when it says Roberts rules, order shall be or will be used in all issues, in instances when it's applicable. And it's like you folks don't even know what those rules are. I mean, you got a copy of the Roberts rules here, everybody? You're supposed to, because point of order, which is still pending. Fred Stonehouse, and I believe that the mayor, may have been one of the ones that requested the point of order. There were several points of order damaged several days ago, before the new administration took place. And there were several, there was male and female voices, and so we don't really know who those are, you didn't, he didn't entertain that motion to just read the rule onto the record, it resets the rules, publishes amendments, it then becomes a journal, has to be entered into a journal, then every time you have a question, you say, I'm clerk, is it in the journal? Yes, right here, okay, it's all decided, you don't have to talk about it again. And I believe that there are some in this community, Ron Keith, one of them, because he suggested this to me, that, you know, I mean municipalities are trying to get away from Roberts rules. Well yeah, of course you are, make it a little easier and not so much, you know, it's not so hard, you don't have to remember so many rules and whatnot. But Roberts rules is what's fair, everything you believe that's fair, and you think about is fair, people get to make a motion, they get to have discussion, that's Roberts rules, every single thing, it's been used for a hundred years here. So, this part about, I believe there's a passage in Roberts rules that says that small boards and committees, under twelve, can use more flexible rules. So some people, and I believe Ron Keith is one of them, says, well then you can be more flexible, and you can just not do the rules if you don't want, on the fly. That's not what that means. And if you, a point of order would, would show that. Show where it shows the flexible boards and committees, that rule, point of order, read it on the record, and it shows, you have to then change it to be more flexible. You can change it to be more flexible under twelve, because once you get twelve or more, it's very complicated and people can take advantage. So at a small board and committee, you can do that. So this flexible rules that you folks have seemed to be following here, and the mayor right now is actually violating the written rule, and I believe it's a willful disregard right now, as I speak, in my rights under the public comment. So this flexible thing that you folks have decided outside a meeting to follow, is an unascertainable standard. We need to be able to know what the rule is, you clarify it to us, and then we can do it, we can have a public hearing, and you can change the rules up, and then change it back to what it is now.
Your time is up.
To your thing, see?
Your time is up, sir.
Same thing, violate my rules again, my rights, thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening, Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. I'm here to offer a personal invitation to everyone in this room, especially the people behind the podium, to a presentation I'm giving this Thursday night at Peter White Public Library in the Chyris Room, beginning at 6:30 PM. The Chyris Room is on the second floor, past the Bell Collection. The reason I'm giving this presentation is after the last meeting, commission meeting, or excuse me, Mayor Protem Hill told the room that a work session was, was scheduled, and I had a request from one of the commissioners to give my presentation, so I offered it to the entire commission, and I was told by the mayor that other presenters were going to be there, not me. So I decided to schedule my presentation before your work session for several reasons. Number one, I spent the past four months researching every piece of paper I can get my hands on in the history of the Clift Style Chemical Company, and I summarized it in a useful form for anyone, let alone people who are tasked with enormous decision-making. Number two, I have discovered a number of different facts that have not come out in any of the prior public meetings on this. I've also discovered facts and documents that have been, at least in one case misrepresented to the Planning Commission, and that's the statement that things were getting better at the site, and I'm not saying that casually, I have documentary evidence that shows it's not getting better, and that's evidence from the state. One of the differences between my presentation and the presentations you will enjoy at your work session is I have the luxury of not being an employee of the city. I don't depend upon the city for my livelihood, and I don't depend upon any of you for my future. Therefore, the truth that I tell is based on a document that I have. I've created an Excel spreadsheet that shows each document I've reviewed, the date, the sender, the recipient, and what it says in there. You don't have that in your files, I know I've looked for it, I really was hoping to find it, because if I had it, I wouldn't have had to create it. The history of that site is a history of wishful thinking, bad decision-making, followed by more wishful thinking, followed by wood tar coming out of the ground. Now, let me assure you, there will be no chemicals in the room, my original thought was to bring in some wood tar, but I am not the person to jump over the fence and dig up a scoop of wood tar from Clift Style. I do however have a couple of bags of tea that smell just about as bad as Clift Style smelled, and so I wanted to share that with you, because if you don't, if you haven't smelled it, you don't understand, your first complaints are going to be the smell, it is truly god awful. So again, you're welcome to attend, 6:30, I hope to see all of you there, thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hi there, Colleen Roberts, 903 Adams Street. And I've been here several times as a proponent to Picnic Rocks, to the island, to the lake shore, and I'll be honest, I was wrong, okay? I really do appreciate Picnic Rocks, I have lunched there a lot, I enjoy being out there, but I see the damage the lake has done. The island, that's a treasure we have to protect. Lake Shore Boulevard between Wright Street and Holly is terribly damaged. Now, if you were going to take score, it is Lake Superior two, Lake Shore Boulevard nothing, okay? So that's kind of where we are. I'm also a pragmatist. As much as I hate to say it, I don't think we should fix it between Holly Street and Wright Street. I think we should wait until we put the new road through and see what how that goes, otherwise we're just digging a ditch and we're putting in more money. Hurts me to say that, but reality is reality. I do thank you for all your work, and I do thank you for all that you do, and we can't help it that the Miss Superior out there is a lot stronger than we are, all right? Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Frank J. Ferro, 350 East Ridge, Marquette, to speak on item six, these are my opinions. Since the last meeting, our east beaches were dealt more devastating blows. What's more telling is that the, most telling is that the areas where boulders were placed years ago largely survived the onslaught, begging the question as to why this board sat negligent for a decade, ignoring warnings that our priceless park was eroding. It's evident that we could have avoided much of the damage had this board responded to public comment. Our board members sat on their hands even after the need for eventual action became obvious. This is the biggest example of a stitch in time saves nine. Shamefully, this philosophy never reached the commission. Our members refused to learn from past errors even after reminded and warned all along. To the detriment of the thousands of us who live for that beach, they opted to relinquish a half acre of pristine park that other cities would die to possess, rather than being seen as accommodating a perceived rabble-rouser. When I reported that the road might one day become threatened, I had no idea this would occur in my lifetime. Long after my death, people would say, we should have listened to Frank a decade earlier, we could have shored up our beach for much less cost and saved our park. Why did they wait to act until the road was imminently threatened when maintaining the beauty of our lakefront was even more important? Before the dozens of trees, some of them old growth, literally vanished. Well, much to your chagrin, Frank is still alive to rub another told you so in your noses. This governmental immunity has gone too far, the negligent need to be held accountable after assessing how much of the damage is attributable to negligence versus record-high lake levels. One member has been here through it all, Mr. Stonehouse. How much he's to blame versus the forces of nature isn't precisely determinable, but most any excuse is negated by the fact that the shored-up segments mostly survived. It's alleged that Mr. Stonehouse, the mariner himself, is one of those most accountable for the demise of our lake shore. It's imaginable only here that board members would place the importance of ignoring an enemy above the preservation of a sacred lakefront. Had I not been immersed in this alleged underworld for so long, I wouldn't believe it myself. Good then, I've been at this for twenty-one years, and I'm primed for another twenty-one, like a billion Energizer batteries. So long as all hope isn't lost with four current members, they're free to determine how our ensuing years will proceed. But one might ask how many times someone must be proven right before he's heard. Of concern are our new members who seem so fixated on being named on the hospice motion, they lost sight of the fact that we were given no decent chance to comment, even after hearing of the unacceptable problems we've had getting depictions for various parcels since the manager assumed his position. Again, this board's option to ignore an enemy exceeded the importance of entertaining a viable public opportunity for all our citizens.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Up next, we have a presentation by the Upper Peninsula Children's Museum to honor the Guardian of the Quarter, Ms. Xana Foster. The Guardian of the Quarter is an opportunity to recognize an extraordinary young person who has really stepped up to help others. Mr. Jim Edwards and Ms. Xana Foster, if you could please meet me at the side podium, I would appreciate it. Hi, Mr. Jim.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, Ms. Xana, congratulations, we've got a City of Marquette certificate for you for your leadership, and also a treat from Commissioner Schlegel, thank you Commissioner Schlegel. And I was hoping Mr. Jim Edwards could step up and kind of tell us about Ms. Xana.
So, the Explainers Youth Volunteer Program, now the Guardians of the Wow, started twenty-three years ago, this month, and since, well, last eighteen years, we've been bringing guardians, youth volunteers to the commission, say thank you for your support, but also to let you know that youth is doing well. And Xana came to us, and for the last quarter, she's been coming in every Thursday, and unlike other guardians, she does homework. So did you know that earwax is beneficial? Do you know what happens to the skin, especially inside your nose, when you get really, really cold? So Xan has been producing a curriculum for us about our new body exhibit, and surprising some children, especially this Thursday when she'll have a white lab coat on, and she'll be the doctor of the day, with a lovely young lady from the Student Leader Fellowship Program at NMU, and they've been working since September on lesson plans for me, that myself and other volunteers can then do inside the body exhibit. So I love the attention that she's brought to us, the dedication that she's brought to us, and I don't get to share the cupcake. Thank you for continuing the tradition. Thank you. Do you want to say thank you?
Congratulations, Xana. Did you want to say anything for the crowd? Okay, congratulations.
Xana came to the commission because we thought it was a good civics lesson, but did not know she was receiving an award, so she's shell-shocked.
Okay, congrats, thank you. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Schlegel.
I move to make the motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, do we have a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero, now that Commissioner Frazier has joined us. Next up, we've got unfinished business here, item number five, a lease agreement for the Hockey Mutineers of Marquette. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you Mayor, background, Hockey Mutineers of Marquette has requested the City Commission consider leasing locker room space at Lakeview Arena. Staff has worked with the City Attorney and Hockey Mutineers of Marquette to draft a standard lease agreement which provides for the terms and conditions of the request. The monthly payment is $1,078, the first payment of which is due upon execution of this agreement. The term is five months from October 15th, 2019 to March 15th, 2020. Proposed lease agreement was introduced at the commission's November 25th, 2019 meeting, and approved as recommended to move the agreement forward to tonight's meeting. Fiscal effect, the Lakeview Arena Fund will receive $5,390 in revenue for fiscal year 2020. Recommendation, approve the lease agreement with Hockey Mutineers of Marquette for locker room space at Lakeview Arena and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Schlegel.
I'd make the motion to approve the lease agreement with the Hockey Mutineers of Marquette for locker room space at Lakeview Arena, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Lorenzer?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Schlegel, any comments?
You know, I haven't been to as many games as I'd like to, to get to, but I have to say that this organization, of all the organizations that we've seen come through in hockey programs at this level, I think they really have been doing a nice job of not just, you know, representing themselves as a, as a hockey team that wants to be a part of our community, but just as far as the conversations that I've had with them or the managers and whatnot, they've just done a really nice job of being part of Lakeview Arena and being part of the, the whole system that we have over there, and I want to thank them for their efforts.
Thank you. Commissioner Lorenzer, any comments?
Yeah, I totally agree with Commissioner Schlegel, is that this is more than a locker room, if you've ever been in a hockey locker room as a youth or as a, as a player, you know it's a communal place where you can build camaraderie with your teammates, and I know that they do borrow it out to Marquette Junior Hockey when they have big tournaments, and that's a really exciting time to be in that, that space, and they're doing great things in the community, and this is good for the city too, so it's a win-win.
Any additional comments from the commission? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. Moving on to new business, item number six, Lake Shore Boulevard Emergency Bank Stabilization. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you Mayor, background, during the intense storm on October 16th, 2019, and subsequent storms, the shoreline along Lake Shore Boulevard from Fair Avenue to Pine Street sustained heavy erosion damage from wave action and the storm surge of Lake Superior. At the October 28th, 2019, regular meeting of the City Commission, action was taken by the commission to hire Smith Construction to place up to fourteen hundred linear feet of rock armor along the coast, starting just north of Fair Avenue, in order to protect the city infrastructure, including Lake Shore Boulevard. Following the completion of the project, the city experienced another intense storm on November 27th, where the coast was directly impacted by twenty-foot-plus waves. The shore armoring did its job in the sense that the road is still intact along this section of Lake Shore Boulevard, whereas the section of Lake Shore Boulevard from Wright Street to Holly Street experienced catastrophic failure during the storm. The coast, including portions of our new armoring, did experience some damage and must be repaired and strengthened to maintain its effectiveness. Staff reached out to Smith Construction, who had just completed the project, and requested a proposal to remediate the damage to the armoring in order to ensure that the integrity of the road is preserved. The proposed remedy will be placing additional armoring at the unit cost of $800 per load of rock. It is estimated that it will take seventy loads to restore the original armoring. Staff support stabilizing, staff support stabilizing the bank and existing armoring by placing additional rocks so the coast is armored for future storms and the infrastructure remains protected. Fiscal effect, sufficient funds will be made available through a budget adjustment to cover the emergency work from the storm damage once it has been totaled. Recommendation, approve the expenditure for shoreline armoring with Smith Construction of Marquette, Michigan, in the amount of $56,000, with a contingency of fifteen percent for a total not to exceed $64,400. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you Clerk. Mr. Verito, I believe you had reserved time on this number.
Frank J. Verdo, these are my opinions. Few should disagree that immediate action is required, but all this board seems concerned with is the road or the city infrastructure as it's written on the cover sheet. Absent from the document is any mention of the parkland we've lost along that stretch, including two-thirds of the width of our urban forest between Fair and Pine Streets. Also missing is an agenda item to shore up the stretch from Picnic Rocks to several hundred feet south, which is equally important. Ideally, we don't wish to see boulders along our shore, but until money is procured for tombolo or groynes, it's a quick, less expensive Band-Aid on the wound to hold us over. One of the most damning sentences on the cover sheet is that quote, "The shore armoring did its job in the sense that the road is still intact along this section of Lake Shore Boulevard." This negates any sane excuse for having waited so long. We may be able to land a better deal per linear foot if we handle both at once. It's cheaper now than if we wait until the Boulevard to the south of Picnic Rocks is imminently threatened. Think of how much less expensive this could have been had this board acted a decade ago before the infrastructure was threatened and labor and material costs raised so significantly. So long as the Corps of Engineers is allegedly partly to blame, why have not we not procured a grant to help us pay this enormous cost? Our advocate in Lansing ought to be involved, and Ms. Campenzi. For over a year now, we've heard no update on our, what our advocate is up to despite multiple requests. We apparently wasted the money to retain him, just as feared. How many times over how many years was this erosion to our beaches ignored? How many times, over how many years, was this erosion to our beaches ignored? Answer, enough time to have saved hundreds of thousands of labor dollars and over an acre of precious parkland had the armoring occurred then instead of now. Regardless of anyone in Lansing, our main advocates were intended to have been seven elected officials and our city manager, few of whom showed genuine concern throughout the many years since the first proactive warnings first alerted our board to this eventuality. That was the 105th time I've used the word proactive in a commission comment. Proactive means acting in anticipation of future problems, needs, or changes. Judging from the sight of our lakeshore, this is about the least proactive body of minds that God has ever known.
Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Frazier.
I make a motion to approve the expenditure for shoreline armoring with Smith Construction of Marquette, Michigan, in the amount of $56,000, with a contingency of 15% total not to exceed $64,400.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Stonehouse. Thank you. Commissioner Frazier, any comments?
Mr. Verito, I know you've been around for 20-plus years, and I've been around for 40 years. This has nothing to do with Commissioner Stonehouse. He is a boulder like myself. He is a maritime historian. If there's anybody that loves the lakeshore and loves the lake, it's Commissioner Stonehouse. He has nothing to do with the erosion. When Commissioner Vito was here, he noticed he used to close down the road every year because of the waves, and then now the lake is at record highs. That is the reason why for most erosion is the lake is at record highs. I mean, normally, a storm hits the walls and it just disintegrates, but now with lake levels being so high, the wave is even stronger. Yes, the Army Corps of Engineers admitted possible fault for how they built the break wall, and they are giving us a grant. The reason why we waited for 20-plus years, Mr. Verito, is because we don't have the money. Mr. Simpson, our treasurer, could tell us how much money we have in the bank. We don't have money to do this. We now have a grant to help fund some of the road, to move the road inward, to eliminate problems, to raise the road up so people can still see the lake again. Most important thing is people want to drive along the lakeshore and see the lake. So, what we're going to do is, under city manager, he can go over things better than we can, move the road over into the park, the old style property, raise the road up six feet, so you can still see the lake, and then redo the lakeshore with funding through this grant we got. We have funding to do, move the road. We need to chip in some money, but we lost the money that we were meant to do the road ourselves. Now, it will, it's going to take a while to get fixed, and once the road is moved, we're going to work on restoring the lakeshore. More beaches for Mr. Verito, more rock, more restoring the erosion as it stands right now. And after Commissioner Stonehouse speaks, maybe Mr. City Manager could give an update on what the stuff's going on with the road.
Mr. Stonehouse.
It's interesting how we lose perspective over time, and we all do it because we kind of remember what things were like when we were there, and then as time passes, we don't always remember what they were, we kind of remember what they are. If that makes sense, it's memory. Can anybody guess when the last period of near historic low water was on the Great Lakes? It was 2012. That was seven years ago. So, we have literally gone from near historic low to near historic high in seven years. That is unknown, literally, in all the 150 years of Corps of Engineer tracking for it to happen that rapidly. So, how the city is reacting is obviously driven by the speed of change and the ability to adapt to that change. Historic high water on the Great Lakes, 1986, mid-eighties. So, again, difficult time that we have to work through. But we also have to remember, why we're doing what we're doing with the rock, why we are armoring the lakeshore in that particular area. We're defending not only Lakeshore Boulevard, we're defending also the stormwater outlet. We all know the importance of stormwater and management, not only, obviously, in the City of Marquette for a variety of reasons. We're defending the bridge on Lakeshore Boulevard. We're defending Shiras Park with part of the structure that goes in on this little segment of Lakeshore Boulevard. And we also are defending the corner of Lakeshore Arena, the arena we have right there. So, there's many reasons why we've got to react to that and do it now to preserve what we have, because ever trying to recover it will be almost impossible. And as we go forward with other areas of the lakeshore that we need to deal with because of the high water issues, we certainly don't want to be dumping rock everywhere as helter-skelter that needs to be done to a coherent, functional, engineer-driven plan, and that's, of course, what the city has and is working towards that Commissioner Frazier spoke about. So, I just wanted people to understand that, to have a little bit of the historic background of what's happening, not only on the Great Lakes, but in that particular section as it affects us. And by the way, if we were living at the outlet of Lake Ontario, where it goes into the upper reaches of the St. Lawrence, they're having massive flooding, and that flooding caused by high water in the Great Lakes, difficulty with dams, they've had to control that water, and they're getting to the point of making serious argument of closing down the St. Lawrence Seaway now, because by closing down the seaway, they can prevent that further flooding that's literally causing billions of dollars of damage to Upper New York State, Ontario. But if they do that, they also cause billions of dollars to the shipping industry on the Great Lakes, especially the saltwater vessels coming in. So, what they're dealing with there, for example, is massive compared to our little corner of the world. But our little corner of the world is certainly reflective of what's happening elsewhere on the lakes. So, thank you, Madam Mayor, for allowing me to speak.
Absolutely. Any other commissioners that would like to comment on this item? Mayor Protem Hill.
So, several things I want to say about this. And first off, thank you to the staff and the contractors who have worked so hard to protect what's there. I want to also speak to the fact that it wasn't just that the rock was put in in October and November, but the outlet behind Lakeview Arena, as I've been documenting for a year, the sand has been shifting and moving around, so much so that we were bringing out an excavator and a bulldozer to move the sand around so that the outlet could actually flow back into Lake Superior. So, we've actually been working on this space for quite some time. And I think this is one of those things where it's both to your credit, but it also has an unintended consequence. When you look at some of the pictures I have, and I'm going to be putting them up on the web after today, but I wanted to have a chance to have a conversation with folks today first. And these are things, if anyone who's walked back there will have seen this, the lake was moving around the sand quite tremendously for months and months, and the city staff did such a nice job of cleaning it all up that you never knew it happened. And that, I think, is that unintended consequence that has come around to, then, why are we, you know, what happened? And there's this thought that there was somehow negligence, when in fact, folks were working really hard. It's clear. People put hours and hours out there to move the sand back. But as was said earlier, the lake's going to do what the lake's going to do. And so, as stewards of the lake and as stewards of our money, I'm very concerned that we actually have been putting our focus in the wrong direction. And if you want to be able to live with the lake, we need to understand the hydrodynamics first. You have to actually start with the water, to put it in regular words instead of science words. We have to start with the water. We have to understand as best we can what the water is going to do, and then you start moving around the land. Now, we can't predict exactly because for the reasons that Commissioner Stonehouse said, there's been tremendous unprecedented change in just the last seven years. And so, I'm not saying that, again, that was negligence exactly, but we had, we were paying attention to the land and not paying attention to the water. And so, I'm asking, we are going to have a work session, date is still being figured out, about what's going on with these roads and infrastructure and trees and water, but we have, again, just one more time, if we don't start with what the water is doing, we're just going to keep having these issues. And again, I absolutely respect the work that's been done to maintain what's there. I respect the fact that people have put in hours and hours in making it look like, you know, the sand hasn't moved, when in fact, it had. And the loss of those beautiful trees, I had a constituent actually come up to me in tears at a restaurant, out of concern for what's been lost in that space just in the last couple of months. We are going through an unprecedented environmental change in our community. So, this, and this is just the area from Fair to Pine, and then we get to the area from Pine to Holly Street. If you haven't seen, the road is literally gone now. Sections of the road is gone now. And we've been paying a lot of attention to that area, and that's partially what the work session's going to be about on Monday, next Monday. And I hope, I know, again, we don't have a lot of time, but I'm hoping that we can also, again, start to address what's going on with the water, as well as what's going on with the land. We are going to have to learn how to live, I think, differently with the lake, with these great changes that happen so rapidly. And a conversation was started on that on Friday, which I'm going to talk about in my comments at the end. And I think this, it's sad. It's sad how we have these, we're losing things that we thought would always be there, and that's hard. But I'm hoping as stewards, again, of both the land and the money here for us, that we can do a good job looking forward and not just backwards about how we live on the lakeshore. And I encourage everyone to please contact all of us what your concerns and interests are on this. Thanks.
Commissioner Lorenzer.
So, yeah, I actually agree with everything that Mayor Protem Hill just said. This vote actually puts me in a little bit of a predicament, as my comments last week after the storm explicitly called expenses like this climate change bandages, and I've since acknowledged those comments as abrasive and a little dramatic, and I hope I've adequately apologized to the people that I might have offended for their planning. But I'll remind everyone that climate change is abrasive and dramatic, and I don't want to continue damage to the shoreline, so a no vote here isn't about doing nothing. There are just some things that we do have to accept, and I think if we had, or maybe if I was privy to an adequate and comprehensive plan for this section of the shoreline, I don't think we would be here debating $64,000 on top of emergency repairs in October after $154,000 that, which we had not budgeted. I know the city is doing their best to try to mitigate storm damage to the shoreline, and I really do appreciate the work, but I believe things like this require a much deeper, longer conversation. In my opinion, I think we have a very adequate plan for one mile north of here, something I've supported, defended, communicated, championed, even when it was unpopular. I really like the plan, the overall plan for Lakeshore Boulevard. I like it a lot. It solves a lot of problems. One reason that it's being funded is because it goes well beyond dumping rocks. We are talking about dunes, swales, native grass, engineered rocks, beaches, and elevated and relocated road. It's very comprehensive, but it's geographically and linearly short. And the area in debate today might have some different requirements, some different needs, but I want us equally to channel that same political will and that passion for this section as well. If we do that, it's my opinion that funding will come. It's not in our budget to spend $12.3 million on every one mile of shoreline, but I think we can find some radical balance and some happy mediums here, something at the very least that would disable us to have the need for emergency repairs every few months. You know, there's been a lot of talk this past week about respecting some decisions of commissions in the past, and I'm interested in historical references only as they relate to lessons for the future. And with climate change specifically, I'm almost exclusively interested in the future. And we can't address this, in my opinion, with solutions from the past. It will no longer work. We're in a new era. Fall storms are predicted, November gales are predicted, and even if that's what we want to limit our conversation to, how the weather works, the fall storms didn't constitute an unpredictable emergency. The last one maybe did, but more are coming, and they're coming in hot, and I'm so happy that the mayor and the manager is asking us to have a city commission work session as soon as possible to address this more comprehensively, and that's what I want to seek my sights on. It's my very informed and researched opinion that missing from this entire conversation is the word "climate change." We patched this road now, which we admit is temporary. What about the next storm? Are we being proactive or reactive? I believe in the Anishinaabe principle of making decisions in regards to the next seven generations, and I see this as a solution for the next seven months, if that. It's time to listen to the lake. It does want that road, and as a commission, I think we owe it to the public to bring everyone to the table and decide what this area looks like for the next 50, 100 years, and I don't think the plan presented to us right now is conducive to any kind of sustainable vision for the long-term future. So, with respect to those who want to stabilize the existing road, I do, I think those days are over. We need to come up with a better plan, one that ensures public access and can weather more than the next storm, but the next years of them, of which we can expect more. Based on the projections and the frequency intensity of future storms in this area in particular, I think we can and we must do better. I've heard this past week some alarming things that high water levels are good for Marquette because they cover up antiquated infrastructure. We're at 18 inches above normal. Normal high water levels are good for Marquette, not 18 inches, and also not record lows. I just fundamentally disagree with that. I think to not talk about record-high or low water levels as an adverse effect of climate change is where we're really missing the boat. I've also heard the claim that lake levels are projected to go down in 2020, so we need not worry, but I actually haven't found any conclusive evidence on that. And if so, the fluctuations from lows to highs are not positive for erosion at all. I think this is, and to think that this is predictable weather following normal patterns is obtuse, and it's disingenuous to the argument. We have some fundamental questions that we need answered about sustainability and infrastructure on our shoreline, and until we do that, I believe these types of solutions, very respectfully, are short-sighted. And for this, I'm passing on stabilizing the road at this time. I need something far more future-oriented and part of a much greater plan. These rocks, I mean, we say that they did their part, but, you know, here we are debating another $64,000 to reinforce them, and I'm skeptical that they would last the next winter storm. So, until we come up with something that will be in place seven generations from now, I can't support this. I don't know if we should let the lake take the road, but that's what it wants to do, and we need to talk about that more in depthly. So, let's bring in experts to the table. Let's bring the public back to the drawing board. Emergency repairs every storm is just not the way to do it. So, considering what I'm hearing from residents about long-term goals, I don't think this is environmentally or fiscally responsible and aligned with the broader vision.
I'm going to be a little bit shorter. Grew up on the shores of Lake Michigan or Green Bay in my whole life, up until I was 18 and left town. In the 80s, I saw the high water levels, and before that, I saw the low water levels. I've seen a couple of spikes come in between those years, and I understand what the Army Corps of Engineers put out there as far as their studies that show the cycles within the Great Lakes. I think I may have said something close to what you were alluding to there, Commissioner Lorenzer, about the levels, and I'm not, that they're supposed to go down. According to the cycles and the studies that they have, they are suggesting that we are peaking either this year or next year, and that we can hopefully see the cycle bring things back more closely in line to what we're used to historically. Who knows if that's going to happen or not, but I can- But I can tell you, after living through it, that I've seen it down to the point where you've either lost 30 or 40 feet of shoreline on your personal home's property, or you've gained about 100 yards of sand out in front that takes you out to ankle-deep water for another quarter-mile even. So it's pretty amazing what Mother Nature wants to do when she wants to do it. It's very important that we take the steps right now to shore this up, not to say that there shouldn't be a more well-rounded and seven-generation approach to where we are headed with this. But if we don't take care of this now, we're going to lose, we're going to probably end up losing part of Lake Shore Boulevard's parking lot, if not, I'm sorry, Lake Shore Arena's parking lot, if not part of the building. So, you know, these are measures that we need to put in place in order to at least buy some time in order to do this. If you go down and drive through M-35 all the way up to Esconaba, you'll see rock in weird places. Up until about two years ago, you were wondering, why the heck did somebody put that junk in their yard? Well, because at one point in time in the early, mid-'80s, they needed that to stop what was happening right now. And it's going to happen. Probably cycle a couple more times, and maybe it'll take another 35 to 45 years to see something that'll top the charts of what we're seeing right now. But it is, it is part of what Mother Nature's plan is for, for what we have going on around us. And I would love to hear staff chime in on this. I realize we've beaten this thing inside and out, but if staff wants to give a little bit of background on the number of years that we've had, started to work on different processes to combat what we're seeing right now, I would love to hear some of those examples brought forward.
I'd be happy to take a quick stab at it, at the pleasure of the mayor. Is that okay? We do have, and I thank Commissioner Lorenzer for actually acknowledging our plans and the rest of the commissioners that have, because we do work very hard on those and gone through a lot of community processes. And those, those plans, I think what kind of gets overlooked on those is the actual intermediate step between the plan and the actual construction to fix things. And it was noted, and Commissioner Hill had sent out some correspondence, and she brought up some very legitimate points from the first Baird plan that identified some action that they had recommended. And those actions that they had recommended in that Baird plan are actually the things that get lost in the fog between the plan and the actual construction. What happens after the plan is when we get financing for something, and I'm going to use the north section that we have all community agreed upon, and we're now going to spend the money to do. Once we have that plan, the next step is, for instance, in this example, we went out and worked with Superior Watershed Partnership to get that National Wildlife Foundation grant. Well, as part of that grant that the commission already approved, one little section of that is those foggy details where they have to go out and understand the lake prior to coming up with a design for it. So we may put a design and a plan that is kind of like a landscape architect. It looks good, and everybody agrees upon it. The next step is hiring a coastal engineering firm, which we, as a project team, have just gone through the process of. It's not something that the commission's going to see, because Superior Watershed Partnership is actually the lead on the project, but we've had five members of community development, our senior engineering staff, review the proposals with them. They're the folks that are going to go out there and determine the water depth. They're going to use the U.S.A.C. reports and other things available to them for the lake level protections. They'll do the bathymetric contours. They'll understand the littoral flow. And then they'll go out and do some field work where, you know, it could be soil sampling or the jet intrusion to determine the size of the materials out there. And then they, in turn, flip that around to something that we can use that will somewhat assure us. Nothing is ever 100% fail-proof when you're dealing with Mother Nature, but they will give us, you know, a lot better odds of success to turn around and actually design something that can be built that will give us bang for our buck. And like I said, have a relative, relatively high percentage of success that we're going to protect that infrastructure. In order to get to that next step, which, for the section of road that we're talking about now, we have had several staff meetings with Superior Watershed Partnership. I know Kurt Goodman is working with them on finalizing another grant package for that section of coastline, that would perhaps allow us to do something similar at a smaller scale to help us move forward until we can then, again, find the funding to do that. I think that grant is somewhere around $200,000, and it includes some planning. And we've also looked at addressing that stormwater outlet in there as well. So there are some things that go on behind the scenes, so I appreciate the opportunity to kind of clear the fog, what happens between planning and actual implementation.
Go ahead, Commissioner Lorenzer. Or, sorry, Commissioner Schlegel.
Thank you. Thanks for your input there. So I guess my point is, I really feel that it's our responsibility to the community and to the shoreline to allow this funding to be found within our budget and take care of this issue. Otherwise, it's just, to me, it's just being irresponsible. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Hill?
I'm confused. Who's actually doing the measurements?
The measurements that will be done for the upper portion, adjacent to the Cliff Stau site, will be done by a coastal consulting firm. Right now, the SWP, serving as the project leader, is negotiating the terms of the contract with a firm that includes Baird, which was the coastal consultant, which we had done before. As part of their responsibility with the project, once under contract with the, through the grant, they will go out and do the actual bathymetric contours, which we have some done in-house. We had it done through what's called LiDAR. We had that done, but it's not, it's not as 100% accurate, plus or minus, as it is to go out and actually do the bathymetric contouring from the boat. But Baird will be doing most of that work provided that SWP can get them under contract.
Thank you. I really don't, I really think, I would not call these foggy details. I'm just going to say it. I just find that, that is the reality. It's not foggy. I mean, yes, it's moving around, but, and to just call them details, I want there to be transparency. I think the public wants there to be transparency. So I just find that perspective, I don't understand. And so, and yes, you took the words that were in the document and talked, and put them out there, they're going to do these measurements, they're going to do this. The point is that the public understands, not even just that the science is done, but that the public understands what's happening, and that we're going to have a process in place so that the public understands and that we understand how we're spending millions of dollars for one mile of roadway under the direction of folks who don't even work for the city. That's my fundamental concern. How do we maintain accountability within this system? I would like to understand that. I think, again, I believe that everyone is working with the best intentions and wants to do good work. There is no doubt about that. But these are the millions of dollars that we are in charge of, and how do we build that accountability back to the people who are, I just want to make sure that the public understands, the public knows, and that this isn't just being handled, you know, oh, here, everything's, don't worry, we're taking care of it. That needs to stop, too. And it needs to be public and understood. And so, yes, people may find that there's too many details, and they'll tune that out, but that is so much better than just having things be taken care of by others who are not even elected. That just really, obviously, really concerns me. So I'm glad that we're taking care of these things. This is absolutely essential to how we learn to live with the lake, but it has got to be transparent, and we've got to understand how the money is being spent. These are our public dollars, and we in this table are the folks who are responsible for understanding how that money is spent.
City manager, would you care to comment on that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me just try to fill in a little bit of the details here and try to explain how this is working. First of all, the grant we're dealing with was awarded to this Superior Watershed Partnership. So they have $2.5 million in their hands, basically. We have engineered the road and the road movement internally. All that is done. The shoreline restoration, which is a bulk of this grant, or a part of this grant, is to restore the, you know, the shoreline from the road, the new road location to the water. And because the Superior Watershed Partnership is primarily responsible for that part of the restoration, we agreed in a meeting last week that they would take the lead on the coastal engineering for that portion of the project. Now, to maintain public transparency, we also agreed that the money, for lack of a better term, would be transferred to our finance department, which includes the grant, and that the commission will see the expenses as they come through. So all you're really seeing done by the Superior Watershed Partnership right now is the coastal engineering as it relates to coastal restoration. It's part of working together with a nonprofit in completing a task. The way we look at it is that when you're partners with somebody, you share in the workload, you share in the responsibility, you share in getting things done. And in this case, it doesn't mean us doing everything or them doing everything. We have a pretty good working partnership with them. I mean, we trust them, and I think part of this discussion needs to be a certain level of trust and confidence in who we're working with. I don't disagree that the details aren't important. I mean, I think they are important, but there also has to be a certain level of trust that we are doing what we need to do as a good partner, but also to protect the integrity of the public process, the integrity of the financial dollars involved. And it's just the way this particular program is resolving itself. So if we were the sole grantee, we would be doing it all, but we're not. The next grant, the FEMA grant, and help me out here, Dennis, is that also a Superior Partnership grant, or was that us?
They are assisting us with that one, though, but the FEMA grant is directly between the city of Marquette and FEMA, but they are helping us with that quite a bit. As well, the grant we'll be submitting, the Coastal Zone Management Grant, is one that we are submitting directly with their support.
Thank you. And just to continue that part of the conversation just a little bit more, is that we also have one other grant. We were just, the federal government just released $100,000 to move ahead with the Army Corps of Engineers in analyzing that grant. And just to go back to a comment by Mr. Verito, is that one of the grants we're dealing with, both, well, two of them, the FEMA and the Army Corps, they're federal grants, and we have no recourse through our state representatives in dealing with that. That's all federal, and we are working with our federal partners, our federal representatives, to try to facilitate those grants. So we are getting the help that we need. And, you know, the whole issue here has been the money, the financing. We would have done this 20 years ago, 10 years ago, if we would have had the money. There were other priorities at the time. When you talk about doing a shoreline restoration, I made a comment today to somebody, I mean, that $12 million we're going to spend on Lake Shore Boulevard next summer, 2.7 is the road. The rest is shoreline restoration, which tells you where the expenses are. So in fact, what we are doing is putting a huge investment into the shoreline, I think, for the stability into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Commissioner Frazier?
Make, real quick. First, picnic rocks, we have, if, Commissioner, if Mike can, you know, heads up, we have an engineering firm working on that right now. They're looking at options for restoring picnic rocks after the damage happened last time. And Mr. Stonehouse, Mr. Stonehouse might be one of the fellow admitter, but when I was a kid in the 80s, you could barely make it through on a boat between the picnic rocks and the shoreline. Of course, way back in the day, it was probably a rock ledge all the way out there, but now the water's so high, it's going right over anything, so. And I heard last time on the radio, just, I asked Sarah Comiskey about this, Lake Michigan is getting grants to anything that is Michigan property, and Lake Michigan, they're getting grants to cover anything because erosion damage. So I let Sarah Comiskey know, I said, can we get some help from Lake Spire? Because there's a lot of big cities in Lake Spire. There's obviously St. Marie, which covers all the shipping, like Mr. Stonehouse said. There's us, there's Houghton, there's lots of cities in the U.P. that could use help with lake shore erosion. So hopefully, we'll get it done. I think the city's moving the right way.
Commissioner Lorenzer?
I just want to make sure that we're talking about the same thing. Today, on the agenda is about the section from Pine Street to, by Lakeview. It's not about the $12 million, one-mile road of Lake Shore Boulevard, and I just want to make sure that we're very clear with the public of what we're talking about today. And so, like, all these conversations are great, and I think we should table them for the work session and then decisions going forward from there. But today, we're talking about mitigation and damage to a specific part by picnic rocks. And so, I might have got a little off track there, but I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Agreed. Let's try to wrap this up, gang. Mayor Protem Hill, last comment.
Right, because we don't have a plan for the area between, do we? Between...
Not a long-term plan, though.
No, the, between Pine and Fair.
Correct. We do not have a long-term plan.
Nor do we have a short-term plan.
Well, the short-term plan is what you're looking at now.
Right.
And what we hope to do is stabilize this shoreline so that it's there, so we can develop a long-term plan based on what we have there, not what it might be after every storm.
Right. And so, thank you for that clarification, because, yeah, I can understand why. We just went on this big thing that was all about the other project. Was it not, and, 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 yes, if I had known that, how this actually worked, where, how it works between the city and the SWP and the money, but we don't have that ever, that's not written down. Let's just write this stuff down and get it transparent. That would alleviate a lot of concerns, and I don't, so, and that's one. So write it down, put it out where people can understand it, make it transparent. And then, is there any infrastructure between Pine and Fair besides the road? Are there any pipes back there? What's the electrical situation look like? What else is back there? Just, I know most of that's actually NMU land, but is, that was the one question I actually had. Do we, is there anything else back there?
I think the only thing we have to deal with there is the bridge right over the stormwater outlet.
So there's no pipes, no electrical lines?
No water, no electrical, no.
Okay. It would, it would help us out a lot if you wrote this stuff down. So then I wouldn't have had to have my little rant and would have saved us all half an hour. But I appreciate that folks are moving forward, and I'm done.
So I would like to add that while I did vote no the last time that this came up for the Lake Shore Boulevard emergency bank stabilization, I am going to support this round. I know we're making progress on having a bigger conversation. round. I know we're making progress on having a bigger conversation as evidence tonight, and as we will be having a work session in the coming weeks. It does appear the last round of stabilization did work and was necessary, so I will be supporting. So, let's go ahead with the vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please say no.
No.
So, motion passes four to two. Moving on to item number seven under New Business, Commission Appointment to the Marquette Area Sister Cities Partnership. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. Background. Since 1979, the city of Marquette has engaged in sister city programs focused on cultural understanding, international friendships, and the sharing of ideas. The Sister City Advisory Committee was established February 13th, 1989, to advise the city commission on all issues regarding the participation of the city in sister city programs. In 2015, due to the limitations of the city charter and commission policy, the Sister City Advisory Committee had been limited in its ability to recruit members and fundraise for outgoing delegations. These limitations led the advisory committee to recommend to the city commission, the city commission decommission the advisory committee and establish a relationship with then newly-formed nonprofit Marquette Area Sister Cities Partnership. As part of that agreement, the city, the city commission voted to appoint or elect the city's mayor or his/her alternate as the city's voting member of the Marquette Area Sister Cities Partnership. Former Commissioner Sarah Reynolds was selected to serve in this capacity, and the role has now gone vacant. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation: authorize the mayor to appoint one commissioner as the city's representative on the Marquette Area Sister Cities Partnership. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you, Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Schlegel?
I make the motion to authorize the, the mayor to appoint one commissioner as the city's representative on the Marquette Area Sister Cities Partnership.
Move a second. Commissioner Lawrence?
A second, the motion?
Commissioner Schlegel, any comments?
Nope.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Cultural immersion, very, very important.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. On to New Business, item number eight, deeds for properties adjacent to Lighthouse Park. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. Background. The city commission adopted the lighthouse property land use plan at its January 29th, 2018 regular meeting. On April 9th, 2018, the city commission reallocated $1 million of capital improvement funding from College Avenue to the Lighthouse Park projects for various improvements. Due to issues with the state historic preservation office, the multi-use pathway originally planned was moved east and neighboring property challenges were discovered. It was determined that the home on the adjacent property at 612 East Michigan Street was encroaching on city property and the abandoned Ellis and I Railroad right-of-way was impacting four properties within the 600 block of East Michigan Street. After extension, extensive research and meetings with neighbors, the city attorney has prepared quitclaim deeds to transfer the title of the respective abandoned railroad right-of-way properties to the abiding property owners and property adjacent to the Lighthouse Park to the respective owners, one being to clear up the encroachment issue and one maintaining the eastern property line straight to the south. The abandoned railroad right-of-way was rezoned to medium-density residential at the city commission's October 28th, 2019 meeting to match the abiding properties. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation: authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the attached quitclaim deeds and direct the city manager to execute the property transfers. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you, Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Mayor, I, I motioned to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the attached quitclaim deeds and to direct the city manager to execute the property transfers.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Commissioner Stonehouse, any comments?
No further comments.
Commissioner Frazier?
Clean up old property.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six zero. Public comment. Public comment may not exceed three minutes per person. Please clearly state your name and physical address unless you've already stated your address during this meeting.
James Gallant, Marquette County Suicide Prevention Coalition. And I guess I'd like to start by saying, I'd like to assure you that I do agree with probably about 80, maybe 85% of what goes on here. And you do do a good job, absolutely, and your staff, absolutely doing a good job. But there's just a couple issues. That's just that, just me languid, that, you know, other people have said over 20 years, over just, over generations. And I would like to say that I also agree with Mayor Protem Hill, that what we need to be about these rules is to be transparent. It's something in writing, let's get something in writing. We do have something. I went to the website, I downloaded your rules, this is in writing, and come here and all of a sudden, you're not doing it this way. You have an unascertainable standard, agreed outside this meeting, or what I really think is happening is you just, is just agreeing to it on the fly. Whatever next is like, okay, yes, no, okay, there's winks and nods going on, of people going, you know, hey, okay, you agree or not, in order to allow the mayor to continue to, to, and clearly violate the public comment rule right now. And, in all respects. And just, it, it seems to be like somebody has maybe told you that you have, so that there's some sort of unanimous consent going on here. By hearing no objections, the mayor just gets to make the decision and this just flies. No, no, no. Point of order, please, on the unanimous consent rule. No, you have to clearly state that that's what you're doing. By, by hearing no objections, then the mayor's decision now is going to be, and she's going to use your votes. But that doesn't happen. And this flexibility thing, it's like, yeah, it's, it is, you can just, but you have to start from the beginning, your written rules. The point of order will do this. I encourage anybody here, everybody, to, to just, for your constituents, request the point of order. It's right on the record, it's in the minutes, all that stuff, you know. And I think there, there's a couple here, and one that we just had was that the member talked about, maybe we should lay this discussion on the table. There's big, there's big misunderstanding of laying the table. That's for, during a one meeting only. You can't lay on the table for a future meeting. That's the Robert's Rule, the point of order would clearly say that. And you part about, I believe you just reappointed, made a reappointment at a, at a recent meeting. I believe that the rules did say, they used to say, no reappointments. You absolutely have to reapply and have it for everybody and you're going to do it. But you just went, oh, reappoint this person. I don't know, maybe you changed the rule. I didn't really look into that one yet, but before it was. So, I'd ask you to, to please consider that, to, to, you know, get the thing in writing and the points of order. That's how it starts. You start at the written rule now, change it to what you have now. That's fine. But just so it's clear, everybody understands, they come here, they participate, they watch you do it, and they, they can trust you, that it's not just a willy-nilly, you know, flexible thing that, you know, that it'll follow in any rules. It's just, unless, of course, you want something and you're trying to defend it and you're trying to make something happen for yourselves. So, please do-
Sir, your time is up.
Please do the public comment or the public hearing.
Sir, your time is up. You're all done for tonight. You can come back next time. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Next public comment, please.
Thank you.
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. In conclusion, personal note to Commissioner Lawrence, climate change is not a word, it is a phrase. You referred to it as a word. I appreciate what you were trying to say. It is a very, it is a very dramatic phrase, but when you said it was a word, I would, okay, that kind of blew my mind. Secondly, seven generations of decision-making, I did some math, seven generations ago, slavery was legal in this country, women didn't have the right to vote, open and notorious discrimination was prevalent, animals were considered less than concern. So, a seven-generation criteria for a world that changes on an instant is a challenge, and I welcome your adherence to tradition, but it's seven generations is a long time to predict anything. I have another reason why you should have voted to shore up the shoreline. I'm glad you did, by the way. Number three on my list here is hazardous chemicals currently present in the soil underneath the NMU soccer fields. There is a soil barrier over that, and NMU has to send paperwork into the state once a year stating they have not breached that barrier, nor have they allowed any digging in that area. The closer the water gets to the NMU area, the closer it gets to heavily contaminated soil, heavy metals that do not biodegrade and last, and I apologize, I'm not making fun of you, Commissioner Lawrence, last forever, much longer than seven generations. They do not biodegrade. You are getting into the area of the shoreline where the land is saturated with toxic chemicals, and I do not use that phrase lightly as well. My last point of, of comment is awkward for me because I want to thank everybody who's sitting up there for coming tonight. Thank you, Commissioner Frazier. Thank you, Commissioner Lawrence. Thank you, Mayor Smith. Thank you, Mayor Protem Hill. Thank you, Commissioner Schlegel. Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Thank you, City Manager Anjali. Thank you, City Attorney Keith. Thank you, Police Chief. Thank you, City Clerk. I note the absence of Commissioner Bonsell. I note the absence of Commissioner Bonsell because I wish I could say I was surprised. It's the third meeting since the election, and one of the commissioners who was recently elected has chosen to be elsewhere. I'm going to return to this theme, and I'm sorry to be so blunt, but he worked really hard to get that seat, and he's not here tonight. And that is a very negative thing for me, and I'm going to point it out. I note that, I note Commissioner Frazier, when he's not going to be here on time, always lets people know, and he rushes into the room, and you can tell he's killing himself to get here. So, thank you for being here tonight.
Anyone else for public comment?
Frank Cheverito, these are my opinions. November 25th, none of the five members present or the two absent ones cared that no site plan was provided for hospitality house. The true sin is that this has occurred so many times, it's clear that the manager does this to aggravate me. His great intelligence actually works to his disadvantage, because we know he likes to goof around, and nobody is dense enough to forget that many times. The commission encourages this behavior by failing to rectify this ongoing situation in which we're not allowed to comment effectively on land use proposals before they're approved. I'd made clear that no site plan was provided, not even the two exhibits the supplement said were attached. My efforts to procure a site plan ahead of time were ignored by City Hall and the hospital. This board needed to either furnish a depiction or give us a reason why one wasn't needed. Even though it's doubtful anyone opposes a hospitality center, we had every right to know how it would be situated on the parcel. I'd given our chair the benefit of the doubt, saying, quote, "Ms. Smith is too new to have been expected to have already rectified this ongoing problem with the manager. It is, however, her responsibility to assure that due public process is fulfilled tonight," end quote. A legal opinion followed, quote, "There should be an easily understandable drawing. The problem is easily solvable. There are possible legal implications," end quote, which I'm checking into. Earlier that night, a man had accused our attorney of not interjecting the same accusation I've made. It appears he tells his clients what they want to hear for getting right from wrong or whose money pays his salary. Surely, Ms. Smith doesn't want to start her regime with a lawsuit. The same might be said of our new members, who immediately motioned to approve hospitality house with no mention of the concern that it was impossible for us to comment effectively. They seem so intent on hitting the ground running, which is what we need, but without losing sight of the public process. Of course, Mr. Frazier is ready to tell us, see, he rags in every commissioner. Not true, but his accusation has some merit. While I've in no way written off our new members, we're at a critical point. The challenge Mr. Frazier's claim, let us red, red flag this date, or any other date that things started turning south with any new member. To date, he only responds with blanket statements, because if tested against the specifics, he'd fail miserably. While I cannot claim perfection over my 359 meetings, I've never had to retract a comment against any member's integrity. My remarks are thought out carefully with research and multiple rewrites. Mr. Frazier's concerns on November 12th were reported on the 25th in his absence. He's asked again to respond in his library comment about it being a better place if a certain type of punch was available, and the preposterous of his slanderous lie that I threatened anyone in a bathroom. If he failed to review the November 25th meeting in part to compose a response, he had no business-
Sir, your time is up. Anyone else for public comment?
Eric Johnson, you guys are, 1601 Lincoln Avenue. I was hoping you guys still wanted to swear me in. Well, what I wanted to do is I wanted to give you three ideas. I don't have a dog in the fight for this road, but as a scuba diver, Don Pastbender and I and another friend, we spent enormous amount of time between Upper Harbor and Lower Harbor studying lake bed. Myself, I'm looking for invasive species and stuff. Well, the three things I had, and one of the things you're actually lacking right there at, where you were talking about with your bridge, you guys don't have any reef out there. That sand moves around even when the lake is calm. I've seen the bottom, right, right by that bridge, drop down six feet. That's how much sand moves even when there's not hardly any lake action. I would recommend that you guys look at maybe some kind of artificial reef along there. You have a partial one as you head toward Upper Harbor. I'm assuming that's what your Corps of Engineers do. They put in huge, huge blocks, and it's out about, well, it used to be out like 50 to 100 feet. Now, it's like, you could walk there. But the sand moves around so much, you almost need to put something out in the water to keep the sand from moving, and then break those waves up from coming in. You're still probably going to have to move the road. It's too bad you have a lot of insults and arguments about that. Let's see, what's the other thing here? Oh, yeah, from June until August, at Lower Harbor, right off the Ordoque, I noticed a six-inch increase in water. So, you're correct with climate change, but you're also looking at a six-inch increase within that time span. And you could look at where the cement sidewalk was, and the water was level with it. It was remarkable. And the currents under the, in the harbor were ridiculously bad. So, there's, we noticed a couple of the wrecks that are in there now are just destroyed and covered with sand. So, you gotta look, keep an eye on that really, really good. As far as, you know, is your thing with, with that Dow chemical, at, at the area you're concerned with by the bridge, and that whole area, I haven't seen any sludge coming up there. We really haven't seen anything as far as trash either, so we're doing good there. The health is there if we just don't get it destroyed by waves. Oh, yeah, and the last thing is, I would recommend having someone from Corps of Engineers do a current study, a water current study. In that area by the bridge, it's, it gets bad. And like I say, when there's hardly any waves, the current is still there, churning away all that sand. So, if you still want to have me come on board with press guy, I'd be happy to do that, so.
Yeah, Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry about that. Clerk, could we possibly sign him in or swear him in after the meeting?
Yeah, that's fine.
Perfect. I apologize for that mix-up. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
My name's Matt Ludenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave, here in the city of Marquette. I, I want to thank you guys for trying to clarify what was being said earlier. I got lost in the whole minutia of going back and forth about Lake Shore getting fixed. First off, thank you for putting in the, the rocks that are there. That should help create a little bit of a, I guess, rocky knoll on the other side when the water does eventually erode. I'm curious what's going to happen with the ice flow. But I want to, I really am trying to point out that you still have yet to put together a task force or any kind of committee directed towards Lake Shore or Lake Shore erosion, just in general, put together a whole committee. I mean, Mr. Stonehouse put together a committee for the sale of Cliff Dow. So, I'm hoping that some of that environmental impact studies that, I, I don't know if they were asked for, but if you could find some sort of way to put more than just this hodgepodge of solutions together. I've asked for this before. Basically, we took a million dollars out of the road to fix College Ave, and we put it into building a new road down at the lighthouse. It looks like this, fixing this property costs less than that road, which is great. Please do. The point is, do we need Lake Shore Drive? There is no commercial venture down there. There is no residential down there. Right now, you can use it as a dog walk, you could use it as a bike path, you can use it as a walking path. Fixing the, the shoreline itself does not negate you from keeping it road closed. We've proven throughout the couple of years here now that that road can be closed all the way through winter. We never need it open for any sort of, other than aesthetics of driving down Lake Shore Drive, which I grant you, I'm, I'm from a Lake Shore community, and that's one of the most soothing and calming experiences there is. However, when we're talking about multi-million dollars worth of solutions going into place on contaminated land or on shifting soil or on a place where we don't even own, like NMU, like you pointed out, they have some issues with this property. So- So, I'm curious, what will it take for you as a Commission to set up a task force or a, I mean, you've mentioned off many different appointments that, hey, the Boarding Zone of Appeals. Great, let's put together a erosion control task force or committee. Why are we doing this? One-offs is my big question. Now, at the same time, Ms. Smith, I'm very sorry about this, but I've been asked this and I just need to get it on the record. Since there are no bid contracts to Smith paving, is there any ties to Smith paving? Thank you, and I'm sorry I had to ask that.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Just two comments from the Commission. Commissioner Frazier?
Another fun meeting, sorry I was late. Had a little, somebody hit my truck on the way here. I'll blame it on DPW for not fixing the roads, just getting Scott. But, I mean, we are working on fixing the Lake Shore. I mean, I guess we put out to the city, when Vida was here years ago, we said, okay, folks, we can either abandon the road as it is right now, or we can try and shut it down and work on fixing it eventually. And most of the feedback we got from the community was, we want the road as it is. The biggest comment we get as Commissioners is we get emails all the time about how people are mad, they can't see the lake from the roundabout anymore. You can see the lake coming all the way to Marquette, down M28, then going all the way to the island, you can see the lake, but the little area, my founder's son, you can't see the lake because of the condos being built there. And that was just because they're, again, they don't want to dig into contaminated land. There was a railroad down there, there's lots of different contaminants in the road. They put extra fill down to build into the fill, there's like six feet of dirt down there. They built on top of that, so the buildings are probably within the spec they originally built for, but they didn't account for the six feet of fill probably. Yeah, that was before most of us in the Commission, so different, so. Everybody loves the Lake Shore, everybody wants to see the lake. So, we gave the option years ago, we said, when Vida was around, we said, okay, if we can fix the road as it is right now, just put a band-aid on it, or we can shut it down eventually and just go all the way around. And mostly how much people were like, we want the road fixed. So, that's what we're working on right now. Vida's working, worked on it before. Mike Ange took it over, he's been doing a great job. We found some grant money. We would have fixed it years ago, as Mr. Vida said, but we didn't have the money. If we had the money, we would have fixed it years ago, but we didn't. As far as Picknick Rocks, we're working on Lake Shore right now. Picknick Rocks is under advisement, they're working on that. We've got a company out there working on it right now and they've suggested, they're working on possibly looking at putting underground break wall in there, kind of like you suggested. They're looking at that possibly. Talking to my dad about it because we're, as a concrete industry, there is a product of retaining well block that they put underwater to create that. As far as water in this Lower Harbor, I assume it go more than six inches. My dad's got a boathouse down there, my grandpa's property, we've got six-foot concrete walls. And like Commissioner Stonehouse said, the lake level in 2012, we almost had no water on there, we had a hard time launching boats. Now, the waters, when you get storms, the water comes over the break wall, fills up the Lower Harbor like a bathtub and floods the area. The last storm we had, the whole parking lot was flooded, there's six-foot walls, knocked everything around and caused trouble. And as far as extremes, I've seen extremes, years ago, my dad called the weather center and said, what's going on? We saw, like you see in the oceans, there's tides, up and down tides. We had a tide in Lake Superior years ago, it would go up and down six feet. There wouldn't have been, you could walk, you know, six feet out of the water in the sandbar. Within 20 minutes, the lake filled back up and the water is over the shoreline. So, we see extremes, it just happens, the weather's funky, the lake does funky things. And we're working on, and so there is a study out there, the people that we talked to, we said, working on people, the professionals, to look out at the lake and figure out what's going on. Hopefully, we can get some more money for it, we'll make it work. And we're working on it hard and, so you're working on that. For Beacon House, if you want to know what's going on with Beacon House, contact them. I mean, the reason why they couldn't build right there, because hospitals, they said, okay, we'll give you the property, put it on our property. Then they came up with some problems with nonprofit stuff, so they sold the land. And so, you want to know what Beacon House looks like? Contact them, they'll be happy to show you. It's been a great project for them, they're happy to show you. The city has nothing to do with it. The city said, okay, go for it, you know, because it's on the city property originally. And so, we're happy for it. Everybody loves Beacon House. When it goes, it'd be great. And, anything else to say? And hope we go okay and we can do it.
Thank you. Commissioner Lorenzer?
I think I made all my comments during, before the vote, but I just want to say that I don't know that any of us have sufficient scientific background to be able to approach this really definitively. And I know it's very difficult for the city to get seven Commissioners on the same page regarding something as emotional and complex and scientific and complicated as climate change or shoreline erosion and protection, but I'm a little frustrated that we use anecdotal memory evidence as, you know, reasons for weather patterns. I think it's important to look at data and I'm really looking forward to the work session. I hope that we can at least talk about this very contentious topic in a more productive, respectful way, and I hope to improve upon my tone about it as well. So, thank you.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you. Just a couple of real quick things. Couple of people have asked me about shoveling sidewalks. And if you can, we realize that the city takes care of the main corridor sidewalks with their snow blowers and stuff, but if you're living on a street and you're working with your neighbors and you can, you have the ability to take care of your sidewalk, please do. A lot of dog walkers out there, a lot of people just go out for exercise. And if you can do yours and you can help your neighbor out and do theirs, if they can't do it, then be a great neighbor and help out in that respect. So, I was approached by a couple of people and I promised that I would bring it up, but I certainly agree with them. So, I wish that we could, we could take care of everybody's sidewalk, but it's pretty much, that would be a lot of man-hours and money spent that we really should just count on our good neighbors and our hard-working selves to take care of some of that work. I was pleased to keep that in mind. With this, the snow events that we've had, I'm sure that the city's going to do their best to keep the curbs cut back as far as they can. You know, this is a very, almost like a carbon copy of last February and a lot of people had some issues with their homes and I'm getting a lot of people calling me specifically to say that they've got some water coming into their homes and whatnot. And that's because of the ice damming and stuff that's occurred by having such a snowload on top of their house. So, I really want to encourage everybody in the community to get out and take that first three feet, if you can't get up there and take care of the entire roof, but get that first three feet cleared off so that you don't have any water backing up into your homes this time of year. It's a very difficult situation when you've got 30, 32-degree days and 10-degree nights and snow over time, as it gets to a certain depth, it'll insulate itself. And it's one of those things that I don't want to see any of our neighbors having issues on the interior, insurance claims or whatnot with the weather that we're having, that we're having this early in the season. So, please pay attention to that and if you can, take care of it. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you. Couple of quick items if I can. Last Friday was at a conference on coastal management and planning that was sponsored partially by Northern Michigan University. And while I was there, I did make the comment that for some places, particularly Marquette, high water can be a very good thing and is in fact a necessary thing. And the reason behind that, and you got to think about this a little bit, but you realize that the present breakwaters in the city, the concrete cap breakwaters, as well as the Ordoch downtown, the old DSSNA dock, as well as parts of Matson Park Wall, are all sitting on red cedar piles. In other words, the piles are driven in the lake floor and then the concrete laid on top of that. So, if you're in a situation where you have water level below where the concrete meets the red cedar, you now set up a situation of the wood deteriorating. However, when the water is above that point, in other words, relatively high water, you now have a situation where the water, the wood is preserved and has it has been in some cases for over a century. So, good water, low water is not always good, high water is in itself not always bad, and we just need to keep that in mind. Comment to my new Commissioner colleagues, the busts don't stop, which means that as the plans are in place and as the city commission has made prior decisions and we're moving along and implementing them, it doesn't stop for people to catch up. It's really a situation where you have to catch on the fly, you have to educate yourself and you really have to work at this to be able to keep up with the discussion that's not only available with staff and all the knowledge and background they have, but also the older members of an existing commission as we roll Commissioners over. And I realize that can be frustrating that there's no pause button, but there isn't a pause button. And I know when I first got on, that was a situation too, of trying to catch up. And when we came on, there were three of us together that were elected. And imagine three people now trying to play catch up on a seven-member commission. It can be difficult. I know you guys can do it, but it does take, again, a lot of work to get to that point. My last comment, just out of pure interest, I know Mr. Gallant comes in and gives us a great deal of information regarding Robert's Rules of Orders, of Order. I truly am of the opinion that certainly all of the municipal boards in Marquette County, particularly your home board, I believe, which would be West Branch Township, as well as the county government itself, would be quite interested and happy to hear from you too, as you can give them the opportunity to share with your expertise. And I would assume that when you come back up next meeting, you'll tell us the number of those boards that you regularly work with as you appear at this board. And if anybody is interested, Robert's Rules of Order was written in 1876 by a Army officer who was trying to get control of a church meeting in San Francisco and felt that he needed written rules of instruction, which turned out later to be 706 pages long. So, when we think about how things change in seven generations, that certainly can be a generational, I think illustrative of that. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for your time.
First, speaking of points of procedure, when addressing the members who sit behind the podium, it's appropriate to use titles. I've noticed that people are not necessarily using titles with people who are women on this group. So, please, when you're referring to folks, you need to use titles, just making the point. And that would be a point, just watch, check your language on that one. And it's a formal thing, but we're up here in formal roles and when I, when I'm not behind this podium, you can call me pretty much whatever you want, just don't call me late for dinner. So, the, and then one upcoming meeting and then I'll, we'll talk a little bit about some process. Tomorrow, from 12:30 to 3:00, the UP Energy Task Force will be meeting in Hardin Hall at where the library is at NMU to talk about propane, not immediately relevant to here in the city of Marquette's operations, but I know a lot of people have homes, camps, vacation homes where they use in propane, and we're going to be diving into, starting our dive into recommendations tomorrow. So, Friday, I was also at the meeting that Commissioner Stonehouse referred to. It's called Coastlines and People. And at that meeting, for example, we learned that, I think it was, there are 12 or 14 plans that have been done on the Lake Shore. Was it Dennis? But, I can't remember. It was north of 10, I remember. So, so I think if I can put a little more clarity, it's not necessarily, I think, that folks need a pause button, but we do need to have ways to understand what's come before. And for that, I've been using the word transparency to understand, you know, who was involved in the decision, how that decision was made, how the budgets are being allocated. Those are the kinds of pieces of information that I think are important that as a government were held to a very high standard of what that looks like. And so, and it turns out there's been all kinds of Lake Shore plans. That's what I mean, those 14 plans were all about the Lake Shore in various different permutations. It was actually, I'm sure they'd be fascinating, and there's probably actually aspects of them that we want to bring forward, not, because I haven't seen them. And to that end, again, I voted no on the authorization of, for the piece from Fair to Pine because of my concerns about process. And this is, in this way that you have when you're on this formal decision-making body, you don't have the opportunity, except in work sessions, to really talk things through and find actually consensus. You just have to say yes or no. And that's our job and that's, someone has to do it, the buck has to stop somewhere. And so, again, I, it's not that I want the road destroyed, it's not that, I don't think city staff are actually, as I said, I think they've been very diligent to the point where people didn't actually understand how much work had actually been done. And so, I'm hoping that going forward into the new year, because we only have one meeting left in 2019, that we can find ways to be transparent, to help folks see where, how decisions are being made, put them out in writing, put them out in ways that are accessible to the public. That would go a long way to helping us all deal with what is going to be an extraordinary set of uncertainties around what the lake is going to do. Thanks. Productive meeting tonight, some good conversations started that will certainly continue. Thank you to city staff and to the Commission for continuing to move us forward. I did want to state, I had a member of the public ask if I have any relation to Smith paving. No, I do not. There are a lot of Smiths in the world. I get nothing out of that deal. Wanted to mention, the rules of procedure will be addressed at our next meeting. We wanted to make sure that all of the Commissioners could be present. Last week, I attended the Veridia Holiday Party at the new Staybridge Suites. I'm mentioning it because it was the first time I had set foot in that building and it's one of our brownfield redevelopment projects. If you haven't stopped by there yet, highly recommend it. You can see our brownfield dollars at work there. It used to be the old bunny bread factory and it's come a long way. I also went to the Market County Conservation District Annual Meeting. They've got about a million dollars in grants in the last year, they're putting into conservation and restoration in Market County. It was great to see what they've been working on. And then I also attended that Coastlines and People workshop with Commissioners Lorenzer, Schlegel, Stonehouse, and Mayor Pro Tem Hill. Thank you all for attending and looking forward to seeing what that gets going and helps us along in this process. There's another one in February and then I think, was it April or May? There's some more workshops coming up. I did have the honor of serving as a Parade Marshall last Friday, so that was a fantastic event by the Market Downtown Development Authority. And I did want to mention, next Monday, December 16th, before our regular Commission meeting, we do have a work session at 4:30 PM for the Cliff Dow property. We're going to talk about that, so that's one thing to mention. And then finally, I have some personal news that I've already shared on social media, but I wanted to share here as well. My husband and I are expecting another daughter in mid-January. I'm thankful to be able to serve on the Commission, honored to be the mayor, and I appreciate the support of the Commission, especially Mayor Pro Tem Hill, who was going to step up and serve as mayor during my maternity leave. So, I do have every intention of coming back after that point. I will be out for five City Commission meetings from approximately January 27th through March 30th. During my absence, please feel free to contact Mayor Pro Tem Hill and the rest of the Commission. Mayor Pro Tem, you already had your comments here. City Manager?
Thank you. One question, how was the fire truck ride?
I haven't smiled that long in a long time. Seen all those kids, it was just so much fun. Excellent. It was, my daughter helped me and Santa light the tree that night and Santa accidentally threw the glitter at the wrong time and she's been talking about it ever since. So, this magical glitter that lights the tree and he threw it before he was supposed to.
Oh, boy.
The best thing a three-year-old ever could have happen.
Huge mistake.
Yeah.
Just a couple of minor things. First of all, thank you again for all your continued support and effort as we go through these hard times and, you know, the Lake Shore right now is one of the priorities, but it seems like every time we get one taken care of, another one will pop up, so you guys are going to be busy. I will have open office hours this Wednesday, Peter White Public Library, from 10 until noon, for those interested. And just as a little side note, on our city website, we do have information for the public if they're interested on the Lake Shore Boulevard relocation and shoreline restoration project, as well as the climate adaptation planning. So, we do have something out there if, it might be easy for the public to access. That's all I have.
Great. We are adjourned at 7:49 PM. And Mr.--